I think we got really enough.
Oh, yeah.
I love that. You're talking about some talent, John. Oh, I can't curse.
I got one minute to do it, man. I need to fix the clock. I need to fix the clock. Let me get you this, yeah.
Yeah, where's that?
Hold on. You got a green?
Six o'clock. That's wrong. This is always right.
All right, if everybody looks at your clock and their watch, six o'clock, this in here is wrong. So we'll go ahead and start the meeting. We'll have the pledge of allegiance from Mr. Danny Smith.
And a prayer.
Is there anyone drawing with me with the Lord's Prayer, please? Our Father.
Lord, your name, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us.
And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and every prince.
Councilman, Mr. Torrey Quills is out tonight, and so is our city attorney, Mr. Jonathan Gasford. So any legal action that we might have to take might have to be postponed till the next meeting or table. So just wanted to let you all know about anything legal that will come up that we'll have to go ahead and discuss again. Item one, approval of the agenda?
Motion.
First by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion?
Craig, do we need to?
No, he's going to be in delegations.
You're going to do it through delegation?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
He came late.
That's cool. I just wanted to make sure. All right, ma'am, we're good.
All right.
Second to motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All of those that have approved of the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August thirteenth, 2025.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Mike.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item three, appointment of the Secretary Treasurer to take Mr. Craig Cattrall's place. Ms. Anita, the Finance Chairman.
Okay, several weeks ago, Craig informed us that he planned to retire in December. So we put an ad out advertising for the need of a Secretary Treasurer. And we had several applicants go through all of the applications thoroughly. And we interviewed several different people. And we agreed that the one most qualified is Ms. Christie Gremion, who has two degrees from Louisiana College, one in business, one in administration. And most of her duties at her past and present places of employment coincide with just about everything that Craig does. And so we polled the board, and we agreed that she was the one best suited for the position. And Ms. Gremion is here tonight, and I'd like to make a motion that she be appointed as our new Secretary Treasurer for the City of Marksville to begin training with Craig. And Craig will retire in December, and I would make that motion that she be appointed.
I'll second.
We got a motion by Ms. Anita, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion from the council members?
One other thing, John. I would ask that Christie, again, her employment with the city on Monday, to begin training with Craig because of right now we are in need of beginning of the work on our budget. Because, excuse me, on the audit, well, prepare, well, we have the budget, but we will be meeting with our auditor in the very near future. And I have sat in on the past three audit reports, and we've had very, very good reports on all three. And we asked that Christie would start on Monday so that she can start her training with Craig. Ms. Christie Gremion is here.
I got a motion by Ms. Anita, second by Mr. Mike. Any other discussion by council members?
Ms. Gremion, can you stand and introduce yourself, please?
Christie, please stand. This is Ms. Christie.
Can you come up, Ms. Christie?
Right here, Ms. Christie.
She resides in Marksville, is married, has four children, and her past employment has been with the Lord's Prayer School Board, Rappi's Prayer School Board. And as I said, most of what she does coincides with everything that Craig Cattrall does.
And she also, she also works with the same auditor that audits our town. You do, she works with the same auditor in your present place of employment. So it'd pretty well be an easy switch over.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Daniel.
Mayor, council, my only question is, did we, did we, um... Did we assign a rate of pay for Ms. Gremion?
Yes, we did. At the time that we interviewed her, you were in on the interview, and we did talk about that.
Okay, I didn't know if any further negotiations were made. There was just a discussion of what the salary was. And Ms. Gremion was asked at the time what she made.
Right, and we did ask.
And you were in the meeting. We asked her what salary it would take for her to come.
Right.
And she said that her salary, if we could match her present salary, she would be willing to come.
Okay.
And you were in the meeting.
I know. I remember being in the meeting. I just didn't know if there were any further negotiations.
No, that was, that was agreed upon at the time. And that very same evening, which was a week ago today, which would have been September third, Mayor Lemoine asked that I call each council member that night because not everybody could be in on the interview. Everyone was invited to attend. And I called everyone that night, explained everything to them. Everyone was in agreeance. And I asked at that point, well, do I have your vote and support? And every council member indicated, yes, I did.
Okay, good.
Okay, I call for show hands for vote. All in favor of Ms. Anita's recommendation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And Christie, are you able to start on Monday morning?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I will get with you after the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Right now, I ask, since you do have the appointment, if you would join Craig at the table so that you could have an understanding of how the minutes are taken.
Let me move.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, delegation. Anybody that wants to address the council and myself at this time, may do so.
Hold on one second. We got someone behind you. Come on, sir.
Hello, we are Andy and Angie Dixon. We have a nonprofit called Save Sin Law. We established here in O'Leary in 2016, the end of 2016. We are here to ask permission to have a walk on September twentieth at the courthouse square. We are asking that the chief just close off the roads for us. He's done this for us since 2016, the charity walk. And we also need trash cans to make sure the litter is...
Chief, you gonna be able to accommodate that? Clark, you accommodate the trash cans? I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Ms. Anita. Just get in touch with the chief of all the particulars that y'all need him. And I'll call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, no problem.
What is the date?
Next Saturday.
Next, and not this Saturday, but next. It's from eight to around noon. We invite all of you, if you have a business or something.
Sixteenth.
We'd like vendors to show the people what resources we have available for them. It is a mental health awareness suicide prevention walk. So we have, you know, we have, what do you call it, crafts and things like that, too, not just...
So it'd be the twentieth?
Yes.
And what time? Eight to noon.
From eight o'clock, registrations at eight. The commencement begins at nine with a prayer from Michael Riddle. The VFW always comes and raises the flag and gets tapped. We have the National Anthem. And then we have five really good speakers testimonies. And then we begin the five K and the walk, and we come back to the butterfly release, kind of a memorial butterfly release. There's a lot of things to do besides everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
savesinlaw.com.
Mr. Percy?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Percy McGlory. Percy Allen. My wife is Madeline. We live at 268 South Preston Street, and we've been dealing with a city drainage problem that runs through our property. And we've been dealing with this for over forty years, since Gerard Pryor was here. And some covets separated and developed some holes along our property. Well, the city came a few years back and installed some forty-eight inch galvanized piping on the property. And those sections of piping is installed with clamps. The city installed a bulkhead on the entry to the, to the drainage, but it wasn't installed properly. It was installed with some four-by-eight plywood. And I've sent pictures to my councilman, to the city manager, showing that the bulkhead at the end is about four feet thick. The city dumped about five yards of concrete, the first section. And that while they did that, it was no bottom section of the piping that sealed it off. I questioned an individual at the time of erecting the plywood to fill the form, and he said, I don't have no experience with this. And I explained to him that you at least should have a base because I asked the question, and it's going at the entry and the exit. Where do the water flow? All that concrete is at the top of the pipe and nothing at the bottom? We drained maybe thirty percent of Marksville during our line through heavy rainy seasons. And it eroded at the bottom exactly like I meant. City come back and installed the base and it sealed off. When the piping was starting to install, the city said, well, and the joints where the clamps at, we gonna seal that area off once it comes, once we did do it the project. Clamp still there? No sealing in all sections. There's a section in the middle of the forty-eight inch piping. It's got a twelve inch pipe that was welded by our local welder, sticking up with a piece of plywood. And dirt is covered. Once again, the city have that information. And it's starting to erode around that area. Eventually, their plywood will rot now, and they'll drain it. Where it ties in from galvanized to concrete, uh, called, once again, not properly installed. Burlap sack was put over the piping. Stuff was... Stuff was mixed in a gallon can and smeared over the seal. I asked again, where do the water run in the pipe? You're doing all this on top, but nothing at the bottom. They call another concrete truck head. They dumped about two, I'm gonna say a yard. Of the rest of it is at the end of my driveway, what they cleaned out and it gets smeared down. Now we having drainage, it's eroding again. It had two locations where it's eroding. One in the right of way for the TOTD. And the city come in with a contractor, with a tank, with a hose. They put it in the hole in my yard. And immediately, with the individuals there, we could hear it running in the drainage underneath the driveway. The gentleman went in, recorded on his phone. And they showed it came from TOTD, T D, and from the city connection, because there's three more joints of the forty-eight inch, call it, where the, the galvanized piping is tied in. It's leaking from those areas. We got word, we waiting to see what TOTD, TOTD do. They came in and in five minutes, they say to correct the problem and cover up the hole. But I still have the hole on the city side. I requested that, I talked directly to you, Mayor, the morning. And you asked me if I was gonna be home the next morning. You said you'd come at noon. I wanted to show you. That morning came, I mean noon came, Rondell came and said, well, the mayor's business. We not supposed to be on your property anyway, because it's private property. I said, Dr. Michelle, when he was mayor, and I approximate, my wife was city council from ninety-four to ninety-eight. So prior to that, me graduating from Northwestern in eighty-nine. So this was around the time the meeting, eighty-six, eighty-eight, that was put in the books that the city would maintain the drainage. And they have been since then, up until three or four months ago. Well, all of a sudden, we see the city on the property a couple of weeks ago, they cut part of the ditch and they sprayed. And I thank the city for doing that. But I said, what about the other part that goes all the way to the project? One guy, one of the workers, when they did the first project, they got a mound that they had to edge up the ditch. Oh, yeah, when we get through, we gonna come back, we gonna spread that out, we gonna seal the joint so you don't have any issues. Why the pipe is sticking up with a piece of plywood that's eventually gonna roll away and it's gonna cave in there? Oh, we gonna put a, put some concrete around it and put a grate on top of it. What, it's ten years now? And I said, oh, we don't work on property, property. You need a service too. Well, next door to my property, there's a new business, an RTMB, that just opened up right two months ago. What we see one morning, we see Keith Savoy, excavator, Bobcat, guy with a saw. They excavate on that side of the property, clean it all the way, all the way to the end of my property, and then go beyond. So I walked over there, and I just was asking, you know, what's your day rate? Because I got some property on the side I would like to clear too. And he gave me, I said, but what you doing? I'm doing what the city told me. And the city told me to push it back thirty feet. So I get on the horn, I call. Other people call too, wondering why is the city on their property? And they can't do what we requested years ago? And you know what the city tell me to do after getting across the street and cut that whole side, you can see the whole property? The guy's gonna tell me thinking I'm crazy. Oh, they were supposed to be able to have to pick up a lot. You got three pieces of equipment, three people, working six hours, I estimate six hours, because by the time they stopped them, the work was done. I didn't ask them for an excavator, why don't you just dig that thing, ditch out? From these feet fence all the way back. It's about, I'm gonna guess, a hundred feet. Trees growing in the ditch. You know what I'm told? Oh, I can't, we can't do it. Our excavator with the rubber track is broken. I guess it's still broken ten years later, five years later. So we're here wanting to know. You guys say y'all can't find that where it was signed into law?
No, we can't. Craig was instructed by our city attorney. And our city attorney said not to proceed with anything, and I think Rondell, where are you? Rondell, are you here? I think Rondell and the city attorney instructed Rondell that there was never, we looked for it, and I think Ms. Madeline had possibly signed something with Dr. Michelle.
No, we, we didn't sign anything.
Well, there was never nothing signed to, hold up, hold up. There was never nothing signed to go ahead and release the city of any liability. So that's why the city attorney said that we could not go on there until there was a release, a signature to release the city of any liability that would occur on your private property. In the case of, was Mr. Savoy paid a bill for clearing Mr. Charlie Riddler's property?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's what you're telling us, right?
I could tell you, day rate, he told me what his day rate was.
And he told you that the city had paid him to do that?
He said the city was instructed to do it. And when I called him, they hurried up and say, no, we told you to do-
Do you know anything about that, Rondell? Because I don't know anything about it.
You was, you were there?
You went somewhere?
He said, I went out there. He was supposed to be doing the street, across the street. By the trailer we have on the list of the demolition.
Correct.
Where he did across, that was on him. The city never paid him for that, the city never acted.
Father's gift, father's there.
He was in the wrong area.
Sure.
He went to the wrong lot. Where the trailer is marked? Yeah, we had to get that tree, because it didn't include to take the trailers on the ground.
He was on the other side of the street.
Yeah, he parked across there, and he thought that's why he, he went to the wrong area. Claw, no, keep it.
Can you explain that to him?
Oh, he know.
So let me ask this question. I gotta ask, and I can't stand up to you right now, because I'm late. But I wanna ask one thing. After all this time, no one has ever asked the city to do anything, okay? Except maintain that drainage. The city takes care of drainage, whether it's on someone's property, because it's the city drainage.
But you, Ms. Madeline, you have to have, you have to have a release.
No.
Well, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but our attorney told us-
I've been in that house for forty-two years, okay? And it has always been maintained by the city. The city has been maintaining this. And the one time that this came about, about the city was when Dr. Michelle was there. And he said, well, I tell you what, why don't I just go in on and buy your property, and then we'll be responsible for it? But then better still, the council agreed to continually maintain that until a couple of months ago. And for some reason, it was stopped. Now you tell me, how much does it cost just to maintain your drains? The city drainage, not my drainage, because it's on my property. How much does it cost?
I can't tell you that. The only thing, hold up, hold up, hold up. The only thing I can tell you is I'm going ahead and following what the city attorney is telling me? I'm not, no. I'm just, we gonna table it, and we're gonna wait till the city attorney comes here to where he can go ahead and tell us. I have no problem if the city's attorney says that you don't have to have a signature for her to go release any liability, but that was never done. And he said if it was never done, it was done wrong in the first place. I'm just, we, we gonna go ahead and table it, and because we need, we need some advice from the attorney.
Now, since you all came on to the property, after a couple of months of not doing it, and you came on the property to do it some weeks ago, what then are you gonna tell us? Can you continually do it?
Rondell had gone out there, and he got instructions from the city attorney to not proceed.
But they came on the property and they cut the grass. They cut the grass and sprayed it.
No, we did not.
We went there, even excavated in the back alone, their fence, where it worked. Cut the volume at the end of their cover, all the way to the porch. We went over there.
Not all the way to the porch?
No, 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 no.
We cut to the fence, the fence separate their property from houses. Okay, we cut all that.
Right there.
I was instructed, and I told them that, I spoke to you, Ms. Mad, and I spoke to your husband. I went to y'all several times. I told y'all that, I was instructed not to go any further, because it had nothing signed. I went to city hall. I went with Mr. Craig and the other two ladies. We all look individual, all the way back to Dr. Michelle. I told y'all that, I told your husband that.
We're gonna have to table it. Okay, listen, we-
If y'all had something to give it to us, that way I could give it to our attorney and move forward. I never got anything, so I went with the instructions of our attorney.
We gonna go ahead and table this. We've exceeded the five minutes, you know, Mr. Percy? We're gonna go ahead, and we don't have any legal attorney here to go ahead and tell us how to proceed. So we're gonna table it to the next meeting, and we'll take it up then.
Well, I'm forward to what was done, and you tell me if this all went to the fence.
Anybody else in the delegation?
Yes.
All right, city engineers report. I'm sorry.
Man, his is actually, uh, uh, occupational license, I'm sorry. That we Craig was talking about earlier.
Go ahead.
I have a three sixty photo booth business that I'm opening, and I'm just requesting an occupational license. And, you know, that's about it.
Is this a mobile operation?
Yes, yes.
And it's gonna be-
So this, so this will be like to rent for events, weddings, things like that?
Yes.
So your actual office is at four oh five, the Bell? I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Danny, second by Ms. Anita. Any discussion?
Who made the motion?
Mr. Danny and Ms. Anita, second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, no problem, June. Thank you. City engineers report?
City hall.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'll give a report on our projects that we've had some changes since last month. So the first one I want to report on is our water sector project. That's our sewer project, our phase two of that project, where we have a contractor working on highway one fifteens, on some sewer mains and a home station. And while he's doing that, which is getting very near completion in that section, we are working on coping out the water around volume three. Next project is our DOTD four fifty-two drainage project, where we gotta relocate our utilities. We have all paperwork done with that contractor. We're going to have a reconstruction meeting with him next week, and the plan is to start construction October first. So again, that's on our utility relocation on Highway four fifty-two.
How long is it gonna take, Marcus?
I think we've had around forty-five days, contract time, no more than six.
And we got, we got traffic control done, right? With chief, we, we helping them, or what we doing? They doing their own?
Not at this point. We've got traffic control in the contractors, contractor.
Oh.
A lot of signs.
All right.
Okay, next on my list is the Zino de Sale sewer main replacement project. We've requested quotes for that project from several contractors, who only received one in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That quote was received by Cork Land Development. I am asking tonight for you guys to award that contract to Cork Land Development in the amount of sixty-five thousand, okay, this is, this is sixty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. We'll correct that. Did you notice the number drawing? So yeah, I'm asking that you guys pass that resolution, so we can award that contract and get the contractor working. Ultimately, the plan is get him working, pay him, so we can close out the grants and receive some more money, when there be-
Need a motion for that, June?
Yeah, we have to throw that, yes, sir.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Claw, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And next is our fire hydrant replacement project. So I believe since last meeting, we replaced two on John Landry and Hill Delane. And we've got money to replace two more. I have requested amendment to the state to replace one on Juno Street and one on West Monton Street. So that is in the works now. Once we make those replacements and/or repairs, we will close that grant out. And again, be eligible for the next round, from the state.
Marcus, if I could add, if I could ask, when those are planned to be installed, Juno, Hill Delane, which is in my district, those two that were installed there, I was never even notified when that installation was started. And I know that I've requested in the past that when work is done in our districts, we be notified, because our, the voters are asking us. And it's hard for me to give an explanation of what's going on, why there's an excavator parked out front of their house, if I don't even know that these fire hydrants are being dropped in the ground. I would ask that I be notified when the Juno Street hydrant is installed, as well as the Monton Street hydrant.
And I think y'all have checked with the residents where the hydrants are being placed to make sure that it's along the property line and not in the middle of the yard. And I know y'all have discussed that with them.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And in addition to that, I believe the two that we're just talking about, John Landry and Hill Delane, I think there's some dress up that needs to be done around those, I'll check on that. But I think it was wet when they did the work, so they need to finish that. But they are installed, as far as I, I know they are working, but there is some light dress up. And next is our drainage project. And at that point, you have some items to mention at night, so just to give you a little background on that, you've got to appoint a curator for those three properties. What that curator is going to do, step in, put all the legal notices in there, try to reach out and find those homeowners to then request a day of tenure and cover here.
You on number nine, ten, eleven?
Well, yes, I'm still in tomorrow for just telling you what those are about, but yes.
Okay.
Essentially, that's what, what I am discussing. And per the city attorney, he asked that we appoint Jenny Donaghy, I think it's Donaghy, for, as that curator. I think that's what you guys did on the last round. We can, we can cross that bridge when we get there, but that's, that's Jenny on it.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we select Jenny, how you pronounce it?
Donaghy.
Donaghy, Donaghy? As the curator to take care of number eight, nine, eight, I'm sorry, nine, ten, and eleven, two oh four Phillips Street, two seventy-six Legion Drive, and two forty-eight Bruyette Street.
Okay, motion by Mr. Danny, second by Ms. Anita. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The last thing on that project, probably at next, I believe, we'll probably have five or six houses on the list to make a decision on, probably these three and about three or four. And then that should conclude all action that the council has to take on those problems. Our last project to report on is the LWI project. We are at a stage where we want to sit down with the city and the volume three drainage task force and discuss some improvements on working to schedule that meeting probably sometime next year. That's all I have.
Marcus, hold on a second. I think this is your request, two nineteen, you want it put back?
We don't wait till next month. That is one that we gave a thirty-day extension. If we want to just wait, put it with all of them next week, or next month, only until the weekend. There's really not anything I can do between now and the end of the problem.
All right.
Thank you, Marcus, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item six, approval of the occupation license for KPM Ranch. Item six, approval of the occupational license for KPM Ranch LC.
May I surprise it in a minute?
Oh, that's fine, we can share one.
Yeah, we can.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. We are Garrett and Katie Bish. We reside in the Wolf Parish, the Lee and Bush family. Tonight, we are requesting two key components. We have recently invested in the franchise partnership with Brooklyn Marine Coffee. It is out of Alabama and we have decided to bring that right there. So tonight, we are requesting approval for our occupational license and also for our storage common area.
Uh, I think we've discussed something. Do y'all wanna run surge to that place? Cause I think that, that was the only thing in question of where, where the surge line would be located, Rondell?
Yeah, I spoke to the gentleman earlier. We have to cut the road on a Ferdinand extension and sewer line is almost on the other side. I told him he'd be responsible for the cost of preparing the road, concrete, and getting this fixed.
Did you, did you go ahead and notify him with the costs?
That's not the thing. I told him I'd get him one, call me so late this afternoon, I'll get him the price. But they, they need to speak to y'all first about the building they wanna put up. Think they wanna put a container?
Yes, it's, uh, it's in the pictures, the background, a portable container, uh, that we essentially, uh, would like to use for storage, restroom, uh, common area.
Yeah, we actually met with a local contractor who actually put this design together that we will be building this to. That way that it's aesthetically pleasing to the community. It would not be any, uh, thing that would bring the value down of the, of most of the building. We're hoping to actually bring the value up around the town and, uh, make it look better for visitors as it's a huge attraction and hopefully it will work.
So, uh, first and foremost, I'd, I'd like to say that I, I'm always excited to see new businesses come to, come to Marksville, come to the parish. What, what did strike me wrong was your, uh, public social media posts that you were coming to Marksville. You put up a sign on the property that it was the future home of the grit and, grit and grind coffee. Before you even came to the council for your license?
Yes, sir, we wanted to see what the public wanted. We wanted to see if this is something the public would like to have in the community and it was, yes, so the public was.
Okay, and I, I get that, I get that, you know, um, surveys are great too. Also, that plan that, that has been developed for, for you all, for this, this establishment, did you get that to Mr. Marcus, uh, our engineer, for him to review that?
Uh, no, sir.
If you could, please, so, so his firm can, can look at that and, and, uh, give any suggestions if they're needed.
It sounds like they'll need a building.
Yeah, well, basically what it is, is a storage container like a, let's see, our old storage hall box.
Marcus, he has it behind him.
So is it actually like a mobile food truck that is gonna be tiny and stable area on the property that you're not moving in? Our hope is it's for the state.
Sure, sure.
And where are you, uh, what is this close to the property, I'm sorry?
Uh, so I'm right, it's totally forget wireless on, uh, by nineteen twenty drive.
So at the corner of Ferdinand.
Old Western Auto Lot.
Yeah, the old Western Auto.
Yeah, Old Western Auto Lot, yeah, that's cool.
Correct. I mean, the only problem I see is if you'll agree to go ahead and pay for the surge to where you would have to, the breaking of the road and reconstructing the road and where the surge line would run, I think, I think that's the only problem. But, uh, we could get you those costs and then if you decide that you won't agree to that, I mean, I, it's the only thing, I think it's the only hurdle that's in the way.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, wasn't there a previous business that was there on that lot? Was it a pet business?
Uh, Western Auto.
Western Auto Building, years ago.
Let me ask you this, when the Western Auto was there, there had to be some kind of surge line to go ahead and take care of there.
When they redid that, uh, line, they wired it up. When they crushed that, they filled it up with concrete also.
Okay.
And they got rid of it.
Alright.
They didn't want anything hanging on the property, causing a loss.
Alright.
And that Western Auto was later turned into a pet supply store?
Yes, it was in the fifties or something.
Well, I'll make a motion for the, uh, for the license to be granted pending, uh, a signed agreement that, uh, they will cover the cost of the sewage line running to the, to the property.
Cool?
I'll second.
Second it?
Motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alright, no problem.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
They're making a deal, that's perfect.
Okay. Item seven, discuss traffic signal on Main Street and Mark Street, Ms. Anita.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. At, um, at the meeting on July ninth, um, we discussed a traffic, traffic signal on Main Street and Mark Street and a motion was made by Carl Chapman to remove and replace the stoplight with stop signs or caution light to have DOTD study the intersection to see if there is an alternative to stoplight. The motion was seconded by Toric, Carl, Toric, and Anita vote yes. Maya Michael and, um, Michael Grumian and Joseph Smith. The names were Maya Lemoine, Michael Grumian, and Joseph Smith abstained, but the motion carried. On, uh, we had a special meeting on July thirty-first, at which time, uh, we accepted the minutes, uh, from the meeting of July ninth. Well, since that time, now Carl, the thirty days have elapsed on, on the study?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure, uh.
What, what, do you know when they started the study?
What day the study was done, what, what day it started, I, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
Chief, you know, you know.
No, they, uh.
Because.
They came and switched it to caution light and had signed on the bulldozer study for thirty days.
Right.
But I don't think they put a date on that.
Yeah, I don't remember what day.
Yeah, well, uh, the motion passed on July ninth, okay? And, uh, so I was just wondering, it was a thirty day study, so if they started around that time, that has elapsed. So I was just wondering if we ever heard anything about what the decision was made.
No, ma'am, and I know the signs are still up.
Right, and the caution light is still going. But I did vote yes to have the state conduct the study for thirty days. However, after I traveled from Mark Street to Main Street on a few occasions, I don't think that's feasible because if we have vehicles parked in what was first guaranteed and in vehicles parked in what was Main Street printing, there is no way a driver can see if there, if there is traffic coming from either direction. And the few times I passed there before I realized that I didn't need to be passing there after I got hit, almost hit a few times, I don't see where that's feasible to do away with that stoplight. Maya Lemoine, I reached out to him, he had a similar problem as well as we are getting calls from people who drive there and it's an accident waiting to happen. Because in order to see if there's traffic on Main Street, I had to put my, the nose of my vehicle in the lane of travel to see. And if there was something coming, there, there was no time to back and get out of their way. Luckily, they were able to swerve and not hit my vehicle. So I'm bringing this up tonight because I, I would like to reconsider my vote.
It looks like they scheduled to make all that happen the second week of August.
And make what happen?
Which I was talking about, you talked about flash and DOTD.
They were gonna go ahead and turn it from permanently, turning it from a red light to a caution light permanently?
Well, y'all were talking about the thirty, thirty days.
Right.
It looks like it was started the second week of August, so anytime now.
Second week of August would, would have been around the fourteenth, so not quite there of the study.
Chief.
I know, uh, district attorney said he was sending a letter to, uh, DOTD recommending that they don't remove it because of too many accidents.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's.
He said he almost got it too long.
It's not a matter of if, it's when. Because if you're coming south on Mark and you going south, when you come to that intersection, if there is a vehicle parked like in the front door of the, of the bank, you have to creep up and almost get in the line of traffic to see if somebody's coming and you halfway in the road. So, uh, like I said.
Look, that was a, that was a recommendation, that was a request from the DOTD. They'll come back with whatever they, they recommend. I know when I use the street that comes in front of Bailey's, cata corner to, uh, computers nine one one, I have to get out halfway the, the street there to be able to get out. So, do we put a stoplight there as well?
They should, I wish they would.
I mean.
I was there today.
When I come out, uh, on, on the side of the AT&T building near the Greenhouse Law Firm, if there's a car parked on the right and a car parked on the left, I have to do the same thing. So I mean, there's, we've, we've got many intersections.
But that law, that light's been there for forty years, it's never caused a problem. So why do we wanna create a problem now?
Two, when you get to the, uh, to the end of the street where you have AT&T on one side and there's sort of a vacant lot to the next, you can pretty much stop and see if there's anything coming because you don't have vehicles parked right at the corners.
Ms. Anita, listen, if you wanna, if you wanna retract your vote and reconsider, we all have the right to do that. That's, you know, like I said, whenever we discussed it that night, that's DOTD's wheelhouse.
And I was agreeable to that because, you know, sometimes things are feasible.
You know.
But after traveling there, I see where it's not.
The DOTD may come back and say, you know what, we need to leave it as a red light.
Yeah.
That's, that's not my, my area of expertise.
Well, I think the DOTD is gonna do whatever the city requests of them to do. I mean, this is just.
But Carl, you have a point. At the end of Ogden, where you need to get up, because I was at Sage Printing Company today trying to get out. So you have to creep and creep and creep and you hope no one, you hope no vehicle's coming. You know?
So, I, I mean, look, it, it, it doesn't make me a difference if it, if it removes a nod.
Well, you wanna make a motion to remove it, the caution light, and go back to the stoplight?
Yes, I would, I would like to make a motion that once the study, uh, the thirty day study, that, that time has elapsed.
Well, I think the motion in the city to say that with the complaints that we've gotten from the public is that if the city's deciding to go ahead and revert and go back to the red light is the city's, is the city's option. For this time, if you make a motion, do I have a second by anybody? To go ahead and, and, and go back to the red light?
Yes, second.
Second by Mr. Danny. Any discussion? All in favor of going back to the red light and get, get in touch with DOTD and notify them with the complaints that we've gotten from the constituents and the people in town and, uh, that, that we wanna go ahead and revert it back to the original red light? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Alright. So, uh, get something to, uh, DOTD, Craig?
Yes, we get it.
And give them the motion that the city has passed.
And Craig, of course, we need to take into consideration, be sure that the thirty days have elapsed, but I guess we can still make that recommendation.
Okay, item eight, discuss the phone contract, PC nine one one, Mr. Steve?
Chris is gonna pass out the proof to give the city. We've done the city work, IT work for ten, fifteen years now. Uh, about five years ago, the internet and our contract with Cintera to do the phone, say the internet. We don't really have any local reps or anybody to fix care of the stuff for Cintera for the phone portion of the contract. So being the IT, uh, we, we would like to put in our phone, PC nine one one phone, manage, maintain them. The quote is basically an apples to apples of what Cintera currently has. Uh, we will renegotiate the contracts with Cintera for the internet, which should significantly go down because five years ago was a build quote. Uh, obviously, they, you know, retain their costs, you know, so there should be, we know what everybody else in the parish is paying, so we can kind of lean on it and get better pricing for that. Uh, there may also be some cost savings on whether some of these phones are needed or not because the platform we offer, three CX, has a mobile function where the users can have an app on their cell phone instead of having a physical phone. So like your officers can have their own extensions that would be hidden so that officer's cell phone number wouldn't have to be given out. Uh, your city employees, that, that's at no cost. Like it's just included in the system instead of giving them a physical phone, which does cost. So this is just basically us taking over the contracts since it just ended. It's up for renewal with Cintera, so we'd like to go ahead and get in, update it, give some local support. You know, and then slowly, I think there's only three entities that were added afterwards. When those contracts come up in two years, migrate them into one, to big system now.
And keep in mind, right now, Cintera's connected to PC nine one one switches that go through.
Yep.
The network, everything, so they, they have to go through PC nine one one switches to, to work.
So in essence, what you would do is you would eliminate a third party contractor, which is out there right now, which is Cintera. And they're handling all of your lines and all, so when you have an issue, you have to go through Cintera's ticketing system and then a big array of mess has to go through before they can even get you a tech assigned and then most unlikely, they're gonna call us to come fix it anyway. So your contract is gonna eliminate them. You're gonna save money in the long run. You're gonna get brand new hardware, all of your phones are gonna be replaced that are there. You're gonna have a rollover network where in case something goes down with the internet, your three CX platform will now in turn rollover into your cell phone that's therefore, in case of an emergency call, something goes down, PD, fire department, the city, any of those departments have a rollover that automatically switches over to whatever you tell us. Or if you call us and say, hey, I need this rollover number switched to that. All of your police officers, any of your fire department, any of your agents that wish to have the app on their phone that can tie to the, the network wherever they're assigned to, whatever department, there is no charge for that. You're not charged for any maintenance, any programming, any, anything else that comes up in the future to take care of these phones, any warranty work, any replacements that happens to the phones for normal wear and tear. Like I can't help it if they can beat one over the table, but I, I can replace it if it just stops working. There's no charges for any of that. There's no hidden charges anywhere. Everything is under contract that you see before you right now. There's no extra costs that come above that. That contract term locks in your price for that entire term. At the end of that term, we see what's going, what's available. And if there's a brand new phone, we replace your phones at the end of that term with a newer phone model. Normally, they typically last five to seven years before they upgrade that model. What you'll get is the brand new model that's available right now, which is.
Uh, year eight fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven series.
All touchscreen phones.
Correct.
A whole lot different than what they got now, so it'll be, you know, taken a step up. Craig can turn to that, you know, if there's anything he needs done, as simple as changing an extension or a name, you have to call the doc, which you all know is in North Carolina. Call for somebody there, explain to them what you need, just to have him adjust that. Or you can call us.
And that'll take more than likely a couple of days, for sure Craig from the test. So us, we're available immediately if you have a problem that's there. We're, we're available to remotely work in or have a tech walk in and take care of it while you're there. So your, your problems are fixed immediately with telephone line. We're SEC licensed, we'll carry your numbers that you currently have, nothing will ever change. All those numbers will roll over into our hands, we'll hold those numbers to everything that you have. So nothing will be even noticed by the city other than you'll have brand new equipment and a whole lot better service going forward. Handsaving money.
I know we've never had any problem with nine one one with the computers and everything we have. I think it's, you know, it'd be smart for us to just go ahead and stick with, with, uh, with y'all all the way.
You got some more?
And if I may, he has the, the three CX app and all that they're talking about, that's how he set us up. We like it, we got one office phone sitting in there and you call the office, it transfers to my cell phone. I tell Craig all the time, let me call you on the office phone. I really just using that, it just seems to work better because the service.
And I didn't elaborate more on that, anytime you use the app on your phone, it calls from the office number. No one has their personal cell phones anymore. It's a big advantage. Uh, most of our businesses love that now because clients are calling in on their cell phones. You have the opportunity to take the app in the background, if you have iPhone, I don't know what most people have, Samsung or iPhone, you just swipe it off and it goes off, and it's off.
And for city records, you know, you can decide what lines are recorded, what lines aren't recorded. So if there are anything, if someone told me, promised me this, or did promise me that, call, call record it.
Keeps it recording for so many days and that's it, you have to pull it up within thirty days or so. Keeps it recording for so many days, and that's it, you have to pull it up within thirty days, so it's always there.
Chief, you got anything with that, with the police department? I know some calls are recorded when they call the end and stuff.
No, none of our lines are recorded.
Yeah, they can be toppled out.
What I'm saying is, do you have any questions or concerns for this, for the police department?
We'll say that we can dare, a lot of times, the phones go out.
Yeah.
We completely out.
Okay.
And we was, you know, this must be the service provider and the physical equipment provider, means we can handle this all pretty quick and what, you know, not where you're putting a ticket, but you.
Chris, what about the fire department, you got any questions for them? You good?
And any of those lines that you have questions on from the police department, just like we handle everything now for them that's sensitive technology, we're licensed for all of that, including HIPAA and everything else that goes forward. So all that, all that remains sensitive, and only eyes on can see that.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, there we go.
Motion by Mr. Danny.
I have a question before motion. Uh, I'm, I'm very familiar with Stephen and always had very, very good results and, and always been very satisfied with him. But in all fairness, do, do we have to advertise this contract?
I don't see why you'd have to advertise.
If, if I can interject, I go to most city council meetings whenever we do proposals, no one does. It's a, it's a regular business setting that you have to decide on, so it doesn't have to be put up and forbid.
I understand, I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah, that's just my personal background, the feelings in cities.
Mayor, it doesn't meet the dollar amount anyway.
Yeah.
So, uh, it doesn't, it's below the threshold, so.
Well, I got a motion and a second.
You're right.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir.
Daniel.
Anita.
Item twelve, discuss the hired police officer, Mr. Mike.
Okay, we, uh, we had advertised for, we short three offices now, and we advertised and this young lady Alyssa came, and she's post-certified, she's been an officer for a number of years, she doesn't have to go to academy, and she's ready to start working in town.
I saw, I saw you sitting there.
I might have known where your boss over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, like Mike, she's.
What's that?
To sign the PC nine one one contract.
Okay.
So she's post-certified, not going to send her anywhere. She was currently in probation for all, working for Mark.
Who's she gonna be with, Mike? I mean, uh, Jason. Who's, who, what team is she on? That, that's fine, I'll make a motion there we hire.
Where were you a police officer before?
Your probation.
I was the sergeant at the Bull's Perch Sheriff's Office.
Oh, the Sheriff's Office?
And then I went to probation.
And for all in probation, too.
Motion by Mike?
I second it.
Second by Mr. Danny?
Mm-hmm. What's the name again, please?
Alyssa Spina.
Good luck.
We got a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Alright, financial statements, Ms. Anita?
Okay, for August twenty twenty five, City Hall thirteen thousand thirty-eight dollars and thirty-two cents. Police forty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-one cents. Fire nine thousand six hundred eleven dollars and eighty-five cents. Street one hundred four thousand two hundred three dollars and eighty-nine cents. Beautification five thousand one hundred eight dollars and eight cents. Total general fund one hundred seventy-five thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Sewer sixty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and seventy cents. AWC seventy-four thousand nine hundred forty dollars. Water thirty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents. For a total of one hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents. Grand total three hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-eight cents. I make a motion that these bills be approved for payment and be paid.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Anita, second by Mr. Mike.
Hey, Mayor, uh.
Yes, sir.
Uh, John, we gotta, I notice the last couple of months, our water bill's been over what it normally do. We got some leaks, or we've been flushing something with, been flushing?
It's hot, everybody, and no rain, and water, and all bad weather.
Swimming pools and everything, okay. I know it's been like ten thousand over what we normally pay, so.
Alright, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, uh, in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Alright, department reports, Craig?
Carl, I'm staying, John, Carl, I'm staying.
Sir, I'm sorry.
Carl, I'm staying, yeah.
Alright, Craig? Secretary of Treasury?
Sales tax collected for August twenty twenty five, three hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars seventy-one cents. Of that is one percent, one hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. The high percent, eighty-four thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars eighteen cents. The public safety, eighty-four thousand three hundred sixty-nine dollars seventeen cents. The decrease of point four five two percent from July twenty five, we collected three hundred thirty-nine thousand four dollars and eighty-nine cents. And a decrease of two point four one nine from August of twenty four, we collected three hundred forty-five thousand six hundred forty-two dollars and forty-four cents.
Thank you, Craig.
Alright, Mr. Esther, Police Chief?
Okay, for the month of August, the police department handled three hundred and seventy-three complaints worth eight accidents, issued seventy-nine citations and made twenty-seven arrests. That was three cases turned over to the DA's office.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chris, Fire Chief?
Fire report for the month of August. We responded to thirty-three calls, twenty were inside the city limits, eight outside the city limits, and four were mutual aid calls. Consisted of one auto accident, two vehicle fires, four firearm activations, two brush fires, four medical emergencies, three hazardous conditions, one landing zone, one dumpster fire, three structure fires, one attempted arson, three auto extracations, two council calls, one electrical issue, two assists to Louisiana State Police, two tree fires and more service calls. And tomorrow is the nine eleven memorial store. The memorial service starts at eight o'clock at the nine one one center, and the tour starts at eight thirty. We will be passing in front of every school in the parish.
Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Y'all gonna be flying the, uh, the flag on, uh, Highway one?
Yes, we'll set it up by six thirty tomorrow.
Alright, thank you, sir, appreciate it. Come on.
For the month of August, we're digging as needed. Last Thursday, Miss Prejean came and did the cages in my house. Doctor Mia and I did, and she gave us some provisions to get done. And done, most of them are ready, a little bit more stuff to do. And we put out three coves, and we picked up three large trees, and right now, we don't have any dogs.
No dogs at all?
Well, right now, we got.
No dogs, and I'm expecting at least for another week, no dogs. She gave some recommendations, we have to put some filler down on the floor, that has, that was done yesterday. We had to paint all the cages, they started today, they should finish tomorrow, but we have to let it dry and let all the ladies get out of there, and then we can start hitting the dogs again. She recommended that because we had quarrel, a lot of it going on. We get dogs out, we get some in, and they were catching quarrels. So what, what it was doing is getting in the concrete and into the gates because of the rust. So she told us to get this filler, once we put it down, you can spray it off with chlorox and it'll go straight to the sewer.
Is, is she gonna do a follow-up visit?
Yeah, yeah, and they come as soon as we finish everything, she'll come back.
Come back and roost?
Yeah.
Mr. Sean?
In the month of Au- August, we picked up fifty-seven bags of litter on all the state roads. In District one, twenty, District two, seventeen, District three, forty-five, District four, twenty-four, District five, thirty, for a total of a hundred and ninety-three bags of litter. And, uh, we have shooting down five canals.
Sean, uh, I'd just like to reiterate to you, those wagon wheels, one at Garen, which is in my district, of course, the other one across from Chevron, I'm not sure whose district that is, if it's Ms. Anita or, uh, Mr. Danny?
And one's in, uh, well, we can hit it on Thursdays or Fridays because it's.
Right, wh- whomever district it's in, whether it be Mr. Danny or Ms. Anita.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Danny's day is Thursday, right? So, if, if those could be hit, his every Thursday, and the one at the Garen every Monday because people look at them and we get complaints every week. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and the Marshall Gordon Club does, does, they do appreciate what we do.
Rondale?
Alright, uh, Mayor and Council, I'll have the sewer department tomorrow, now Tricia Park. We're putting an air lease out on Forest Main. Forest Main is coming from the airport road, that's for Walmart, Lyft, so. Did some calls, and then we have to down Tricia Park, and we're not doing anything for Tricia Park for the city. All eight one one tests were taken, all operators passed, so everybody is certified to bid or get on the tour for the city. And we had some extras that wanted to take it, I let them take it, I think we had sixteen, so. The dumpster that was at the baseball field, it's across from the high school. I asked them to have that removed and put it at the Battoon, the DA Jordan. We keep on, we, last year, we had the same problem. People would go over the weekend, dump sofas, tables.
I remember that.
All kind of trash. Well, they put so much trash and liquid in it this time. We went out there, the dumpster came to pick it up, the whole bottom fell out. So what we doing now, I have got with the school board and Mr. Ray Carlout, they have fifty-five gallon drums at the baseball field. Whenever they have a game, they're gonna put those out, they're gonna supply bags. I'm gonna have a crew the next morning go and pick the garbage up. And we, we have nothing on the sidewalk. That's all I have.
The dumpster issue is citywide.
Yes.
Everybody that has a dumpster is, is experiencing the same thing. I know usually every Monday morning, I get to my office and our dumpster's full of anything that you can imagine.
Okay, Ms. Beverly?
Okay, for the month of August, we had seventy-nine million dollars. Fifty-nine customer has paid, I'm the refiner, and this is seventeen years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. Mr. Buckles?
Alright, for the month of August, for Walmart, I managed, uh, one hundred fifty-three service calls and sixty-three files and repaired twenty-seven.
Thank you, Buckles.
Ms., Ms. Beverly, uh, I'm sorry, the, your cutoff list. How many on that list? No, just, just hold on for you. How many are repeated and don't pay? That's, and the reason why I'm asking is, we have several, I, I know in my district, and I'm quite sure a couple others have, we got a lot of people stealing water from one another. These houses that's empty, I know we have started taking the meters. How many of those that we need to go get the meter from that's, done broke the locks and could?
Well, Buckles, we, after we cut off, he used to send his men's back and did the cutoffs and go back open.
Yeah, we turn somebody on.
Mm-hmm.
They'll go like the next day check.
Okay.
Make sure. And if it's someone that's on the list every month, and we know that they're not gonna come pay, they're gonna take it.
Okay, cool.
Um, Rondale, I had, I had one more thing I wanted to ask you about, the, um, the barricade on the end of Woodside that was damaged early this week?
Yes.
Is, is there any plan currently to replace that barricade?
The gentleman, uh, told the guy that he was gonna fix it. If he doesn't fix it, we're gonna fix it and he sent him.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Jonathan's not here, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Carl, second by Mr. Mike. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye?